I'd like to reopen our regular meeting of September 8th, 2014 of the Morganton City Council. Thank everyone for being here. I like to have a good crowd like this. At this time, we'll let Forrest Fleming give us or present to us the flag, the Pledge of Allegiance. Forrest?
I'll try to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is already here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated.
And tonight, our invocation is going to be given by the Reverend Tyler Roach, Minister of Youth and Family Life, First Baptist Church. You're welcome, Tyler.
Thank you. Let's bow. Creator of all that is, seen and unseen, we are grateful for your presence with us. Your guidance is above all and works through all. Knowing this, may we be willing to listen to those around us. Through the miracle of relationship, may the conversation in this meeting be civil and productive. As a community, help us give our national and state governments something to emulate. May we always seek guidance in doing the best we can do. May we never be satisfied with the status quo. Moving forward, may strength and wisdom prepare us to be big enough to handle the business before us and small enough for each person to invest in that business. We make this prayer as stewards of your creation. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Tyler. Thank you, Tyler, very much. Very kind words. We appreciate it. Okay, introduction of our council. On my right is Forrest Fleming, City Councilman. Next to him is Louis Vina, our City Attorney. I'm Mel Cohen, your Mayor. Sally Sandy, our City Manager. Sidney Simmons, City Councilman. John Cantrell, City Councilman. And Kelly Russell, Recording Secretary. And Becky Brinkley is over in the corner interpreting for our deaf community. Okay, first item of business is the, well, first, public advocacy issues and strategies. I want to commend Sharon and her staff and all the volunteers that we had and all the city staff and the city departments and all the massive number of sponsors. And Carolina's Healthcare Blue Ridge is our presenting sponsor. I want to thank everyone for making such a weekend that we had. A little hot and a little wet, but it was a very, very successful festival. And I want to thank everybody for coming out and helping on the 33rd Annual. Sister City presentation at 4:00 on Friday, Saturday, Forrest Fleming, Sidney Simmons, and myself received a beautiful piece of artwork from a museum. Kelly, where?
Altenberg, Germany.
I mean, no, the name-
Lindannau.
Lindannau Museum in Altenberg, Germany. And it will be on display here. We'll get it framed, and it will be on display at City Hall. It was a very nice gift they gave us. We talked to them a good while, and they're paid a higher wage than we are in the city. Right, Forrest?
Yeah, but we get all the peanut butter we want.
That's right. Exactly. Farmers Market continues on Saturday down at the depot and on Wednesday afternoon up here on Green and Avery Avenue. Okay, I want to also mention, very important for our city council, at 3:00 p.m. on Thursday, we will have a joint meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. They'll be in this room. We'll be in a circular kind of workshop. And we will be 3:00 to 6:00 going over the new ordinance that we hope to get if everything goes well. We'll get it in November, and the planning and zoning will deal with it in October. But this is this Thursday in this room at 3:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. Constitution Week. And we have two nice ladies that I'm going to give this to, but I'm going to read it. Constitution Week 2014, a proclamation, whereas September 17th, 2014 marked the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated in September 17 through '23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Mel Cohen, Mayor of the City of Morganton, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through '23 as Constitution Week in Morganton and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the farmers, framers of the Constitution that they had in 1787 by protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Morganton on this, the 8th day of September 2014 and the 238th year of the independence of the United States of America and of the 225th year of the statehood of North Carolina, the 12th of the original 13 colonies. Mel Cohen, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, let me mention that we have this constitution uptown in our beautiful encased cabinets and for all the public to see. And my understanding is they were well attended over the weekend of the festival. Robin, if you and Nancy would come forward, and I'll present this to y'all. Next is the Recovery Month proclamation. Jim Van Hecky, if you'll come to the podium, I'm going to read it. Recovery Month, September 2014, Burke Substance Abuse Network. Whereas substance abuse and dependency and mental disorders are very real problems that affect individuals, families, and communities, including Morganton and Burke County. And whereas prevention of mental disorders and substance abuse dependence works, treatment is effective, and people do recover, as evidenced by the many people in recovery across our county. And whereas preventing and overcoming substance abuse, dependence and mental disorder is essential to the health and wellness of individuals, families, and communities. And whereas taxpayers save $5.60 for every $1 spent on prevention and $7 for every $1 spent on treatment as a result of increased productivity and reduced healthcare, criminal justice, and social service costs. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the United States Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, the Division of Mental Health Developmental Disabilities, and Substance Abuse Services of North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, the Burke Substance Abuse Network, the County Commission of Burke County, and the Morganton City Council invite all residents of Morganton to observe the 25th anniversary of National Recovery Month. Now therefore, on behalf of the Morganton City Council, I, Mel Cohen, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2014 as National Recovery Month in Morganton and call upon all of our citizens to participate in programs and events that affirm the benefits of recovery. Signed this September 8th, 2014, Mel Cohen, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. All in favor, say aye. Jim, you're welcome to say anything you'd like to.
Well, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff, I just want to thank you for your support of the work we're trying to do in the county. Burke Substance Abuse Network is a collaborative, community collaborative that's really a model for bringing folks who have an interest in this subject a wide diversity of people together to look at what the needs are in this community and try to meet those needs and help the citizens of this county find productive and successful lives in recovery. We thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jim. Come back and see us. Community Appearance Awards presented by Scott Luckadoo, Bill Lennon, Martha Franklin. Anyone else? Okay, we'll do the, where is Scott? Are you going?
Yes.
Okay. Let's, all, you want to come up front, Scott?
I've got Hamilton Williams here.
Okay, all right. Hamilton, we're going to take a picture first. Where is your black at?
It's kind.
Yeah.
All right, everybody look at it. One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese. Look great.
Just happy to be a part of downtown.
Come up to the mic.
Sure.
Hamilton Williams.
As some of you may already be aware, we renovated a building in downtown Morganton just across the side street here last year and moved the pottery studio and opened the gallery. I just continue to be thrilled to be a part of downtown Morganton. So that's all I really had to say.
That's all. Thank you. Is that it, Scott, for those? Okay. Let me say that Hamilton Williams, his whole family, Mom and Dad and daughter are here. And I must tell you, Hamilton, you have added so much to our downtown. We greatly appreciate it very much. And the events that you have showing off and showcasing a lot of the potters and other artists in Burke County and beyond, we want to thank you.
I'll keep doing it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank your whole family.
Morgan and Federal Savings and Loan also won an award, Community Appearance Award, and letters of commendation went to Case Farms Processing and Fonta Flora Brewery.
Revolutionary War Weekend, September 27th, 28th. Bryant, would you want to say anything? Where are you? Hey, come to the microphone, state your name and where you reside.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't know that I was going to speak to this point, but the Over Mountain Victory Trail Association is very appreciative of all that Morganton, General Daniel Morgan's town, has done for the Over Mountain Victory Trail. Obviously, our history is extremely important, and it may be our most salable history in terms of the country. So this September 27th and 28th, there are a number of activities that are scheduled, and they're going to be even better than they were last year. We appreciated all the help from the city last year. There are two that aren't meant, you know, that you may not yet be aware of, at least the general public, and that is that we will have a little dedicatory ceremony on September the 30th, which is a Tuesday, down at the Greenlee Ford Crossing, which is where the Over Mountain men left Morganton after they gathered here to go down to King's Mountain and change the history of the country in terms of whether or not we were going to be British or whether or not we were going to be American. And I'm looking forward to your comments on the 27th. There will also be an activity that evening out at Lake James State Park, and there will be musket firing there. And I don't know if we're going to throw any Over Mountain men in the lake or anything, but there's some beautiful trail out there. And welcome all of the city council members and city staff and members of the city in all of these activities. And thank you again very much for all of the city's help with these activities.
Thank you, Bryant. Okay, upcoming events at Kama, Oh What a Night, I think, I don't, Bill's not here, is he? Oh What a Night is coming up, David Pendleton and Mutz Gone Nuts. Those are two separate nights, by the way. And so, and I think we deserve that last group. That's coming up.
That's Bill's favorite.
Yeah. It's coming up. Updates, Bill Harkin, Compass. Bill, you still?
Good evening, council.
Hey, Bill.
As you know, we are adding a couple of new channels to the Compass lineup this week. One of them we've had a lot of requests for is the SEC Network, the Southeastern Conference Sports Network. Eleven different states, from Florida to Texas, a lot of good programming, women's programming and so forth. They just launched on August 14th. Due to popular demand, we will be adding them to our channel lineup. And that'll be on channel, the SEC Network will be on channel 134. And they also have an overflow channel that'll be on channel 135. So if they get more sports than they can put on one channel, it'll show up on the next one. We've also had a lot of requests for the NFL Network. Now, the commission looked at this years ago and determined that the programming they had at that time wasn't justifying the cost of that channel. But now, they've decided to add Thursday night football games all season. And a lot of those games you can only see on the NFL Network. So since all of our competition has it and people want to see these games, we decided it was time to go ahead and add it, and so did the commission. So we will be putting that on channel 59. We're working on it right now, but we hope to have it all on by Thursday, this coming Thursday. And then the NFL also has another channel called the Red Zone. Okay, that will be, what that channel does, it only airs on Sundays, and it covers the highlights from all the games. And anytime any team is within the 20 air line in any game, they will go to that game and show you the potential scoring opportunity. So it really goes all around the league every Sunday, showing all the highlights. That channel will be on the digital sports tier. And it also has a high-def version, all these channels also have high-def versions, but that'll be on the sports tier. So if anybody wants to see the Red Zone, they can get it.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Brad Boris, Water Resources Director, for an update.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to give you an update on a couple of projects that you all approved at the last meeting. The first item that I wanted to share with you was that the Clearwell and the residuals holding tank at the water plant, both of those projects have been completed. And this is the before and after shots of both of those projects. This was the 3 million gallon Clearwell at the water plant prior to renovation.
Wow.
There's the finished product. It looks very nice. We did a high-pressure wash of it. We put several coats of Shear Creek. We filled in a lot of the cracks. And the contractors did a great job of putting a nice finishing top coat on it, so it looks great. It's just the same tank, different angle.
Hmm.
Pretty amazing. It's one of the most visible assets that we have at the plant, so it really makes the plant site look a lot better. And finally, the last shot from the top. This is the residuals holding tank at the plant prior to renovation. There's the finished product. So those are some dollars that we budgeted for and two projects that we're very proud to have completed in a short amount of time. The last item is, I think Chad has a slide, we've, you all approved that we repaint the landmark water tank here at City Hall. Right now, the plan is to go ahead and have that work done starting on September the 16th. If you look at the monitor here, we're probably going to have to close off, or actually, we are going to close off the front parking lot in order to maintain a safe worksite while they blast some of the paint and recoat that tank. It's going to take approximately three weeks. The plan is at 7:00 a.m. on September 16th, we're going to close the front lot. You can see the two bold red areas where they're going to be closing that. We're going to keep the drive-through open for utility bill payments throughout the whole project, so that will be a benefit. The inconvenience, though, is for folks that are going to have to walk through the back entrance to City Hall. You can see where the big bold P is. That back parking lot is available for customers as well as parking along East Union Street. Something that we've done, we put a press release out today, and we're going to be putting the copy of that press release on the doors to City Hall to let everybody know what we're going to be doing. The biggest thing that I can see, it's going to just affect folks trying to come in and make their utility payments. But again, we will plan to open that parking lot up Saturday evenings, and the contractors are going to be working basically from Monday through Saturday evening. We're going to open that parking lot up. People still aren't going to be able to come into City Hall. We're going to have the tank area roped off or safety caution taped up. Folks that are going to be able to park in that for the Gaston Chapel church service on Sunday. The plan is our crews will come back in on Monday morning at 7:00 a.m., close it down again for the rest of the week. We plan to do that for three weeks. Hopefully, we won't have any weather issues that will prolong that project, but we really apologize for any inconvenience. But I think that once we get that tank repainted, it's going to have the Morganton Trading Company logo on both sides. It's going to really look nice. And I think a lot of folks are anticipating that to happen. So again, the press release is out. We'll have the press release on the doors to City Hall, and hopefully, it won't be a big inconvenience for very many people.
Sharon, we'd like some help getting that word out for that time, please.
And again, it's going to be open for Sunday, church services and stuff, but it's just nobody will be able to come up to the tank site because we are going to have a lot of the rigging in place until, for the whole duration of the project.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Power agents, Sally?
Nothing at this time.
Consent agenda, Sally?
The consent agenda before you tonight includes 12 items, which is, seems like a large number of items. We consider those items to be routine in nature and would ask that you consider approving those in one motion unless there's someone that wants an item removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, those 12 items are minutes from the August 4th meeting, tax releases in the amount of $2,825.80, the ever-popular appointment of a tax collector. So we will be reappointing Denise Smith as the tax collector for September 1st, '14 through August 31st, 2015, and ordering her to collect taxes, which she has already been doing. That's a state requirement. A revision to the standard specifications for water lines and detail with that, and that regards changes to water meters. The consideration of a budget amendment to allow us to make a debt payment out of some borrowed funds for the knuckle boom that we purchased last year. An item declaring the knuckle boom that we sold, that we got rid of last year as surplus property. A budget amendment to appropriate money that we have received from an insurance settlement for some damage that was done at Station 3 for public safety. The purchase of a new dump truck in the belt press operations at the water treatment plant, and that's for $82,369.40, was included in this year's budget. Likewise, purchase of primary clarifier equipment at the waste treatment plant, and that is $145,085, also included in this year's budget. Purchase of a compact track loader with a mulching head, and that is a purchase jointly between the electric department and the water department, and that is at a cost of $98,347.15, also included in this year's budget. And a purchase of a bucket truck for Compass at $66,862, also included in this year's budget. And then the renewal of the operating agreement with power agency number one and our two type 1 distributed generators, which are at the water plant and the wastewater plant. So those are the 12 items.
While we've got Scott Luckadoo here, can he give us an update on this knuckle boom?
Yeah, we're going to do-
We can. We talked about that today.
We have two knuckle booms for service tomorrow. We have one at Three Parries in South Carolina. We received that today, and we have a new knuckle boom back in service after the break.
Good deal.
Yeah.
And I will say, because again, as I told Scott today, you know, this is the most popular question right now, and I know that people have had piles around for some time. Not only have we had equipment trouble, and now we have two in service, but we are also seeing record amounts. I think I shared with you the June and July amounts. We don't have the August tickets yet. We're collecting about double the amount of debris that we collected last year. So we are having record amounts of cleanup to do. So I would ask everybody to be patient, but we should be getting it because now we got two working trucks.
Starting tomorrow, Scott. And that was, if people didn't hear, Scott, both of our knuckle boom trucks will be out tomorrow for the first time. The new one that had to be redone on one of the joints had to be redone by the company. And then our old one that we had it refurbished. So both of them will be on. Have patience, and hopefully we can get you taken care of in the next couple of days. All right, new business.
They take longer than a couple of days.
Yeah.
I know if we approve the consent agenda.
Consent agenda, and I second that.
Well, we first have to, is anyone, you have to ask if anyone wishes to have to remove an item from the consent agenda.
I don't see that on here.
I asked them that, didn't I?
Yeah, but they didn't say. That's all.
We didn't want to remove one.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead.
You know that program at Kama, you need to go see it.
It's gone now.
Okay, nobody wanted to remove anything, and so we have a motion, and we have a second on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, new business, consideration of agreement to extend the contract for sale of property at 500-502 College Street, Sally.
You will recall that we have been working since April of 2013 with the Senior Deaf and Blind Community, Inc. And they have been working with us on a contract for the sale of our College Street property at 500 and 502 College Street for the development of housing development. You have considered a couple of extensions of that contract as they have been working through their process and getting their financing in place and finalizing their construction plans. You have, again, received a request tonight for you to consider extending that to December the 15th, 2014, which is a 75-day extension. I will tell you that we've been holding $27,500 in earnest money. The purchase price of the property is $550,000, and the extension is to allow them the time to finalize everything. And we have been told that this would be the last request because the reality is, is that if this project does not happen and get under construction by December, then it is not going to happen.
Make a motion to approve the third agreement to extend contract for sale with the Senior Deaf and Blind Community Incorporated for property located 500-502 South College Street.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consideration of an ordinance establishing a speed limit of 25 mile an hour, miles an hour, for on the 400-500 portion of Rocky Ford Street, and authorization to install the appropriate signage, Sally.
We have several areas in the city that have been reviewed and checked out by City Engineer Mark Young in looking at these residential areas and the, basically, the narrowness and the dead ends and looking at their totally residential areas and how the streets lay in these areas. In looking at that, he is recommending several spots that our citywide speed limit is 35 miles an hour unless otherwise posted. In this case, it is posted at 35 miles an hour. Mark is recommending that we lower that to 25 and post it as such, that it would be safer for the folks in that area, given the condition. And you have a picture. It's about a 2,400-foot distance that you're talking about for this that would change to 25 miles. You can see that indicated on your map by the yellow line.
I move we authorize reduction of speed limit from the current 35 miles an hour and establishing a new 25 miles per hour posted speed limit on this section of Rocky Ford Street and to authorize and install appropriate MUDCD compliant signage as necessary. Second.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item is consideration of an ordinance establishing a speed limit of 25 mile an hour on Killmore Street or a place in Kenmore Place and authorization to install the appropriate- Okay, next item is, uh, consideration of an ordinance establishing a speed limit of 25 mile an hour on Kilmore Street or a place in Kenmore Place and authorization to install the appropriate signage, Sally.
You have a map indicating these changes also included in your packet. And, and these three streets really are more like alleyways, and, and they run in-between streets, parallel. In-between streets is listed out in your information. Again, they, they are narrow and really function as more alleyways than streets. Meeting cars and passing i- is a bit difficult. These are not posted, so the speed limit would be 35 miles an hour. Mark has again looked at these and recommends lowering that to 25 and posting it as such.
Motion to authorize establishing a 25 mile an hour posted speed limit on Kilmore Street, Aura Place, and Kilmore Place and to authorize installation of the appropriate M U T C D compliant signage as necessary.
Second it. Any discussion?
Aura Place has needed that for a long time.
I should have done that when I was next door.
That's right. It's just an alley, yeah.
Yeah, all right, I second it. Any discussion? More, further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, consideration of a sidewalk encroachment agreement for 100 West Union Street, Sally.
Um, we have several of these to consider tonight. Table Rock Investments LLC have requested this one on behalf of Treat, which is a new business plan to open in downtown. That is going to, um, be a gift wine and cheese shop and offer a variety of things. And they are interested in having a small indoor and outdoor seating area. And so, this would be an encroachment. And again, you, you have a, a picture of that, um, included in your packet. This would be on the Sterling Street side where the sidewalk is fairly wide, a- and you see where it would come out. The staff has looked at that and agrees that there is still enough adequate space remaining on Sterling Street that traffic could still get by, and there would be a, a divider. There's also a picture drawn in to show you their idea of what it would look like, um, on the second photograph that's attached to your information to separate that area from the rest of the sidewalk. Enough for 10 customers, 10 chairs.
Go ahead.
I move to approve a sidewalk encroachment agreement for 100 West Union Street with Table Rock Investments LLC.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Consideration of a sidewalk encroachment agreement for 115 East Union Street, Sally.
This one is received from Rudy and Carolyn Bell on behalf of Brown Mountain Bottle Works. And this, as you can see by the picture, would be on Union Street. And you can see where that encroachment would go. Once again, the staff has looked at this, and there's also a, a picture of the proposed look of the divider between the seating area and the remainder of the sidewalk for you. The staff has looked at this and, and judges that there is adequate room outside of that barrier that would allow traffic to still travel along the sidewalk. And of course, both agreements, I should have said this earlier, call for if either in the future the city or the North Carolina Department of Transportation needs it removed, it has to be removed for any reason.
Motion to approve a sidewalk encroachment agreement for 115 East Union Street with Rudy and Carolyn Bell.
Second.
Motion, second discussion.
I was in Wilmington a month ago, and they have a lot of this in downtown Wilmington. And it really adds to the atmosphere there. And I think both of these will be a good addition to our downtown area.
Very good. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, consideration of a street encroachment agreement with Cracker Barrel, Old Country Store Incorporated to construct a commercial identification sign within Busch Drive and a budget amendment.
Again, you have a, a picture of this proposal in your, um, provided information. Cracker Barrel has agreed to pay for this installation and for the beautification in the center median that would be located toward the end of Busch Drive to help better delineate entrance and exit in Busch Drive after the completion of the interstate project, which is going to be completed someday. I feel certain that it's going to be completed someday. I- in looking at this, um, it would allow, there's also a sign, if you'll look at the information that's included. And on that sign, which would be 50 square feet and 12 feet in height, it would have room for six individual commercial properties to, to be included on that sign in that area. The agreement also establishes the maintenance responsibilities and the landscaping terms. In addition to that, the budget amendment is for you to approve receipt of those dollars from Cracker Barrel because they are paying for this.
I move to approve a, uh, street encroachment agreement with Cracker Barrel, Old Country Store Incorporated.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I move to approve a budget amendment for receipt of funds from Cracker Barrel and corresponding expenditure for the median on Busch Drive.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Request, a consideration of a request for authorization to execute a statement of work with Next Grid for a smart grid pilot deployment, Sally.
You will recall back in February, we're, we're doing a lot of things tonight that, um, we talked about back in February, making a lot of capital purchases and moving forward with a lot of projects that you discussed and considered at your winter workshop last year. Uh, this is one of those. You'll recall that we had a session talking about the idea of moving to smart grid and ultimately having capabilities for remote meter reading, capabilities for better customer service, opportunities for our customers to get the kind of information that a lot of our large industrial customers need to be more efficient in their businesses. And you were kind enough in the budget process to allow us to include some dollars in both water and electric to move forward with this process. We have been waiting because Electric Cities has been working with several cities on this process. And we felt like if we waited and went into this with them, that because of the economies of scale, we'd be able to save some money, and that indeed has proven to be true, saving us several thousand dollars on this project. This is the pilot deployment, and this includes 93 electric meters, five water meters, five load control devices, and five thermostats. And then also the infrastructure to allow all of that to talk to and work with our billing system and our, uh, software and everything that we need to work. This is for a total cost of $28,288.94. It is included in our budget, and we would like to move forward with this statement of work and move forward with Next Grid as the entity providing this through the partnership with Electric Cities.
I move we authorize the execution of a statement of work with Next Grid for a smart grid pilot program in the amount of $28,288.94. Second.
Motion, second, discussion?
The length of this program, will it be just the remaining amount of this year, or is this for a year, a time period?
Once we put this in, then we will evaluate as we go forward, if we grow it, if we, how fast we grow it, if we do. If we leave this in place for a period of time, it would be our plan to report back to you at the winter workshop.
That's good.
What we're seeing.
Okay, consideration to award an architectural and engineering construction design contract proportions of Phase 1 and Phase 2 for the Morganton community. Now, Sally?
This is another one of those projects that we discussed at the February winter workshop. In looking...
We didn't vote.
We didn't vote.
Did you not vote?
No.
Oh, I made a motion and you ignored me.
Commented on it, so, we didn't vote.
Forrest, make a second, I thought you did vote.
No.
Thought we did too. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Goodness gracious, guys.
What's to show mutts going nuts?
It's affecting them.
More than one. Okay, um...
It's hard to recover after a festival weekend, isn't it?
Without a doubt. It's a thankless job.
More ways than one.
Okay, so we are back to the architectural contract for the community house.
Right.
Um, you're aware that we've been working now for some time on looking at a possible renovation for the community house. And there are some fundraising efforts going on in the community, trying to raise some private funding that would ultimately go toward doing that construction project. What you have before you tonight, and what we discussed last February and at budget time, is the architectural plans for the project and infrastructure that we need to do at that building, regardless of whether a project happens or not. And you approve money in the budget this year to do some of those things. This would get the drawings done for the entire project, allowing us opportunities to apply for some grant funding if it became available to match the private funding that is being raised for the project. But most importantly, it allows us the ability to try to move forward, working out a lot of logistics and a lot of things that are going to have to happen with the projects that you talked about, the new electrical service, some work in the basement, including upgrading the delivery where the food deliveries are happening, uh, grease trap work, um, plumbing, backflow preventers, water heaters, AC in the kitchen, you know, the kinds of things that you really need to, to service a building if you're going to use it. This in no way obligates you to moving forward with any of the other renovation work that has been talked about because I don't think you're at the point yet where the fundraising efforts are completed and where you're ready to make those decisions.
Have we had any update on the fundraising?
Not in a couple of weeks. Um, maybe about a month or so ago, seems in August, there, there was some. And I think that currently, the funds that have been raised are in excess of $200,000.
What do we project this, if we do the whole thing, what do we project this to cost? Or do we have a projection?
If you did the entire proposed renovation, everything that was talked about, everything, probably about a million and a half dollars, one point, between 1.3 and 1.5, if you did everything on there.
Make a motion to...
Of course, I don't know if it'll come down to that, right?
I make a motion to award a contract to Glazer Architects of Asheville and S U D Associates of Asheville for portions of Phase 1 and Phase 2 construction design services for the Morganton Community House renovation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Sounds like a lot of money, but I'll, I'll tell you this, our, it'll be good for us. And I, those of us that have seen what's happening under the kitchen with the electric service, the HVAC, and the grease trap and other things like that, it's very needed.
I'm just very hopeful that, uh, we'll be able to, uh, secure some funds from other sources other than the city to complete this project.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, consideration of a resolution to apply for North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant, Sally.
This is year two of the three-year grant, uh, program that you allowed us to apply for, and we were successful in getting last year. This is the funding for our traffic, uh, cop grant, which funds two police, uh, public safety officers to do traffic enforcement. Um, this is the second year. The amount of the grant applied for is $79,584. The city's match is $34,107. But we have to make another resolution to them to apply for the second year.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing, uh, public safety to make application to North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, consideration of adding the NFL, National Football League Network and the Southeastern Conference, SEC Sports Network to the Compass lineup and to increase, increase the rate from basic digital service from $9 to $10 per month effective January 1, 2015.
You, you heard Bill talk earlier about the opportunities for adding these networks that the Cable Commission had, um, considered that in August and that they recommended it. And that currently with the competition and everybody's interest in sporting events, that these seem like good channels to add to our lineup. Asking you to consider tonight, that effective January 1, that the digital basic tier would go from $9 to $10 in order to accommodate budgetary concerns.
Is that a deal?
A good deal.
Okay. I hear a motion?
Move to add the National Football League Network and the Southeastern Conference Sports Network to the Compass lineup and to increase the rate for basic digital service from $9 to $10 per month effective January 1, 2015.
Second it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gentlemen, we have one more item. A res- resolution for the resubmission of the DWSRF loan, bless you, less, uh, loan application for water treatment plant improvements, Sally.
You'll recall that last year, we had gone through the application process to try to get some, um, state revolving loan money from Deener in order to do some clear well improvements at the water plant. And we went through that process, and we were unsuccessful in securing that funding. However, they have recommended that we resubmit this cycle and try to get that. Um, we've been told we have an opportunity to get zero interest money, which would be a really nice thing. So, we need to have a motion to approve the resolution that would allow us to resubmit that.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the proposed resolution authorizing the resubmital of application for a, a DWSRF loan for the water treatment plant improvements.
Second.
Have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank everyone for being with us tonight, and, uh, I look forward to October. Uh, we have some, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yes, Sharon?
I just want to let you focus...
Say your name and where you reside.
Sharon Jablowski, 409 North Green Street. I just want to let you know, because the billboards go up hopefully this week, uh, we now have a Morganton app. So, for your Androids and smartphones, which means they're smarter than me, um, you can go to the Morganton app and download it. Go to your App Store and download it. And what's really cool about this, um, Chad has pictures, but he won't be able to pull it up, is that you can hit, there's different bu- buttons for dine, shop, play, whatever. But you can hit the play button, and since it's for all of Morganton, um, it shows the different recreations. So, if you're out walking the greenway, you can look up, and it'll show you like the trees as you go along. It'll tell you about the different trees. You can go the library, you can go to our city parks, whatever. So, you can use this app while you're out, because everybody carries their phones with them. So, I just wanted you to know, we're going to have the...
What is this, what is the, uh, what is it, the name on the apps?
It says Morganton.
It says Morganton?
Yeah, just go to your App Store and, and go to Morganton app. But it's, uh, really cool, it talks about all of our facilities, uh, Art in the Hall, Activities Living, Catawba River Tree Guide, City Parks, City Facilities, Cycle.
Very good.
Wow.
Thank you.
Just wanted you to know.
Thank you for the info. Okay, anything else from anyone else? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
That was impressive.